Welcome to our candidates interviews in which we bring the candidates for town office directly to your home. While we hope to return to public debates in the future, the recent uptick in COVID cases along with RSV and flu persuaded us to conduct these interviews individually once more. Today's interview is brought to you by Lake Cam, which runs Lakeville's Public Education and Government Access Television Stations. My name is Katie Goodfellow and I currently serve as Town Moderator. With me is Joanne Upham, who will be asking our questions today. Our guest is Mr. Bill Hoag, and he is running for the open seat on the Select Board. For members of our audience wondering about the town's vote at the last special town meeting to go to a five-person board, the approval from the Massachusetts Legislature will not be completed before this election cycle. Therefore, we need to wait another year before we can begin to grow our board to five members. Joanne and I compiled these questions from past debates and interviews, as well as added new ones recently submitted by town residents. I would like to thank our residents for submitting so many thoughtful questions. Some people had queries about open meeting law violations and bylaw regulations and proper conduct at meetings. These issues should be directed to the town clerk. To begin our interview, we will give candidates five minutes to introduce themselves, including why they decided to run for the Select Board and note any other boards or committees that they've participated in in Lakeville or elsewhere. Then candidates will be given five minutes to answer each question. They do not need to use the entire time. After Ms. Upham has asked all of our questions, our candidates will be given two minutes to say some closing comments. So, welcome, Mr. Hoag.
Thank you very much.
And would you please share with our viewers a bit about yourself, your reasons for running, and your past civic service?
Okay. My name is Bill Hoag. I live in Lakeville. I've been in Lakeville since the late 80s. And a little bit about myself, first off, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and to have this meeting and to give me just the opportunity. I've been a Lakeville resident for a number of years since the 80s, as I said. I have not served any boards or committees in the town of Lakeville, but I have been an active member in voting, active resident. I've been interested in the Planning Board, working with, just observing and staying up to speed on what's going on with this town. This town is an important aspect of my life. I live here. I love this town. I have a lot of respect for the town and for the members of the governing body of the town. And I have reached a point in my life that I would like to contribute to the benefit of this town. I believe with my experience, my business experience, and my education and my ethical decision-making processes and working through difficult situations, I believe I have the tools necessary to assist in our boards to continue with this town for the future, for the next, how many years?
Okay. Over to you. We will go on now and start the interview. The position of the Select Board involves working collaboratively with other members of the Board, with other boards and with groups in town and the private citizens. How do you envision working on the Board and with other constituencies, including with the public at open meetings? Please describe how you work with others in times of agreement and in disagreement.
Well, as part of the Board and as part of the Select Board member, it would be important to maintain a sense of professionalism, ethics, maintaining a calm demeanor, respectful of the individuals that have the questions, and addressing the questions as they are, just the questions and as it pertains to whatever they have brought up. Through conflict resolution and through other types of technology, I mean techniques, regardless of what kind of situation that we get into, we need to understand that compromise is sometimes the only way that you can move forward. You're not always going to get what you want when you're in a debate or in a discussion. In public service situations, you have to take the best interests of the town and constituencies in mind when making decisions. The decisions being made by the Select Board should not be their personal desires. It should be based on what the town wants. And courtesy and respectfulness to the other Board members seeking their advice and their expertise as it pertains to their jobs. We have a very intelligent town. We have, the town administrator is extremely intelligent in his role. The planning, the town planner is very intelligent and knows his business. He knows what he's doing. The Planning Board, the Health Department, they all have their expertise. And calling upon them for their expertise is really important to maintain the town's moving forward.
Okay. The Select Board members must make difficult decisions that promote the general welfare of the community and not their own self-interest, sort of like you just kind of said. So please explain how you would approach making decisions in the best interests of the town?
Well, I mean, first and foremost, when decisions need to be made for the town, we have bylaws. We have regulations. We have various things. Depending upon what the question is or what the issue is that comes up, needs to be first weighed based on those items. Then you talk to the professionals in those areas, whether it be the Park Department or the Building Department or the Fire Department or the Police Department. And any of those departments would be able to give us better guidance as to what's best for the town and what's best for the community at large. And then moving forward from there, it's based on what the town is looking for, if that's what they want. I know there's a very, very strong feeling that the residents of the town want to maintain a small-town atmosphere, a small-town structure and keep the character of this land the way it is. And I'm fully supportive of that. And I also know that the town is getting some pressures from outside of its boundaries to maintain certain requirements. So there has to be, there has to be some balance in all of those things, but for the best interests of the residents.
What do you see as the biggest challenges to the town's budget over the next three to five years?
As far as the town's budget, well, from what I'm understanding, the town's budget is a very good, a very good position. I watched the committee meeting online. I've been watching how the funds have been allocated and how the free cash is being utilized, which is, I think, very smart. They're taking a very smart approach. It's not being spent on frivolous types of things. I think the town is doing very well financially. It's maintaining that same momentum and maintaining that same kind of, what was it? They said house sales are down, so permit applications are down and things like that. So knowing that beforehand, and the town administrator knows, has been staying, keeping a pulse on all of that. So it's very good. He would know where we should be maintaining those financial spendings. But overall, I think the town does very well for spending and it doesn't overspend. It doesn't go over the budget.
Do you see any big challenges as far as like anything in particular?
Currently, I don't see many financial challenges. You know, I don't know all the details of the enrollments for the schools, but from what I'm understanding, the role, it's not, it's not jumping too high. So that would mean that the schools are controllable. I mean, they're, as far as manageable for the student-teacher ratio. But that would be something that I would be interested in looking into because I know that ratio could put a big burden on the schools. I know there was talk about bringing in another counselor for the school system. I would, you know, I encourage that. I think the kids, I think our children need to have that resource available to them. And I think that's a wise choice. And I would like to see how that would impact and how the budget would be worked.
Okay. What is your position on future capital projects as they have been identified? How would you prioritize the following list? The town hall, a new town hall, fire station, the COA addition, and the DPW building?
Okay, so I understand that the Fire Department, I watched the video presentation they made of that. That building is in very dire need of being replaced. My question would be, so in priority, just to answer your question, it would be a fire station. The town hall, I believe it's under agreement that it would be renovated or have some improvements done. You said the DPW building. I don't know what the age of that is or what the current condition is, but that would be something. And what was the other one?
The COA addition.
The COA addition. I believe there's a, what is the term that they call it? They're doing a study on the feasibility of having that done and the cost of what that would incur. And I think because of the growing retirement group in the town, I think that was what their primary goal was for doing that. And I think that's reasonable. I think it would be, so Fire Department, Council of Agents already having the feasibility study. And then the DPW. And then the town hall, has the feasibility study already been done for that? I believe so. And I think, but you need to do the fire station first, then move them out, and then find out what we're going to be doing with that property moving forward.
Right.
And I think that would be the next step.
Okay. All right. Okay, now we're moving on to the Middleboro commuter rail. It's located a little over a half a mile from the Lakeville line. Because of this, Lakeville is considered one of the 100 communities affected by that new state rezoning law requiring high-density housing. Would you go through with the planning process to identify an appropriate location for such housing, then write the required zoning, which would be brought forward to a future town meeting for the residents to vote on?
Well, is that a responsibility of the Planning Board for determining those zone areas?
Well, it's a planning process to identify the appropriate location. And yeah, it would be done by the Planning Board, but the Select Board would have to agree, disagree, have some say in it. And would you do that and then have the town go through the required zoning just to see where everything goes? Do you want to follow through with that and continue on or do like Middleboro and drop out?
That's a, that's a good point because one of the things that came up in the discussion about that was that by Middleboro dropping out, they were forfeiting funds that...
For potential future grants.
Exactly. And when I was listening to the Select Board talking about that, I don't think we were in the position that we wanted to do that. So, but it's a tough call to make. And in all honesty, I think it's, I think it should go to town, so town vote. Because where do you put that? No matter what area of the town that you designate or identify as a potential growth spot for dense housing, it's going to be someone's backyard. So no matter what is done, the town is the one that should be the ones that, the town residents should be the ones that vote on that and decide on where they want this to be placed and how they want it to be done. And then, I mean, if the town votes, they don't want it at all, then we have to go back to the drawing board and start deciding how are we going to do that? Especially if it means that we have to drop out. And how's that going to impact the financial position of the town moving forward? Because, you know, do those funds, you know, how important are those funds? And what are we going to do? Because the Select Board, one of their primary objectives too is to maintain the feasibility of the economy through, you know, and maintaining the spending of the town. And what are we going to do? And referring to the Finance Board to determine what's our best, what's our best options? You know, sometimes it's, sometimes what the town wants is not popular with what the Board wants to be. But, and that's a very, very, very difficult place to be. The Select Board can be put in a position where they have a lot of pressure on what is the best thing to do. One of the things that I would want to encourage though is expressing and educating and letting people know why the Select Board feels a particular way about a particular decision. I don't know if, how far that can go and what we can do to really let the constituents know, the people that live in town that have to live with our decisions know, why are we, why are we doing this? Why do we not want to do this? And how can we move forward with making the decision that is best for everybody in town? And no matter what the decision is, you're going to have people that are unhappy and you're going to have people that are happy.
Right. That's what life's all about anyways.
And that's what voting is for, you know? And I think that's a really important part of how we can get the residents of this town out to vote and get involved and start to get, take a vested interest in what decisions we make.
Right. Okay. Rising taxes due to inflation and the town's general budget are a great concern to seniors and those on fixed incomes. As a member of the Select Board, what are your feelings about the issue? And do you have any ideas about how town government can help these people?
Well, there's, like I said earlier on, the older generation is getting towards retirement. People are looking at fixed incomes. They want to stay in their homes. They want to stay in their town that they love. They are the ones that built this town. They're the ones that have the vested interest in this town. How do we maintain a structured town and a growing town without bringing our taxes or the cost of living for those residents to a point where they can't afford to live in their own homes? That is a really, really hard thing to approach. I think one of the important parts of it is to be very cautious of any over rise to two and a half increases because of capital expenses, the capital expenses we want to make, such as like a new town hall or a new this or a new that. All of those new things need capital investments. And nothing is cheap nowadays. Cost of materials have gone through the roof. Cost of labor has gone through the roof and it seems to continue to go up very high. So I think, and I think it's very important that we look at this town as similar to our own budgets. We have, we have income that we can use. We have resources that we can use. We need to maintain for our residents the ability to live in this town and stay in this town and not experience a significant increase over short periods of time that can't be compensated by increases in Social Security or other methods.
Correct.
I mean, if we increase taxes higher in a higher percentage rate than they can accommodate, we don't want to lose these residents in town. So we need to stay in control of that and really think hard before we make decisions, financial decisions on increasing tax.
Okay. Okay. If a town vote reveals that the will of the people is for or against a specific issue, would you cast your vote on the Board to agree and align with the popular vote? Why or why not?
That's a good question. Thank you for asking that question.
You're very welcome.
Like I said before, the town, I think before, that's a very tough one. I think before the town makes a decision on voting something, I think they need to see both sides transparently, the for and against a particular vote. This is what will happen if we vote for this. This is what will happen if we vote against this. This is how much it will cost. Transparent, right down to the penny. This is how much it will cost, down to the penny. Now you decide. If we could, as a Select Board, inform and educate the residents of town in that way so they can make an informed, educated, thoughtful, and honest decision on what they want, I will vote for what the town wants.
And if they can't? And, I mean, is it your opinion or the Board's opinion that the town didn't make the right decision?
If...
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Yeah.
Because that's kind of the question.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. That is, that is the question. I think it really would come down to, that's a tough one, because I would really, I would really like to say that I'm going to vote 100% for whatever the town wants, you know? And I think after discussion with my other Board members, I think I would vote for what the town wanted.
Okay. All right. That's kind of what we wanted to know, whether you would or wouldn't, depending on the situation.
Yeah, I think I would, but it really depends upon the situation.
Correct. It's always going to depend on the issue.
It depends on the issue. And it really depends upon my honest and ethical opinion about how I believe it may impact the town. And I think even before I made a vote decision, I would want to stand before the town in some form, one way or the other. And we need you to know this before you make a decision. And because there are times when I voted for something in this town and I didn't know what I'm voting for, you know? And I don't know why am I voting for this. And I would like to know more information. And that's because, you know, I mean, that's how I can make an informed decision. I can't make an informed decision if I only know one side.
Right. Exactly. Yeah. Good point. Yeah. Okay. Now we're moving on to a little different topic. Given the increasing population of Lakeville, what do you think about deregionalizing our school system to be just Lakeville, not Free Town in Lakeville? Explain your position with the pros and cons exist with a regional school system.
Okay, so currently we have a regional school system. So we collectively utilize the high school and the middle school, right? So if we were to do away with that, then we would have to build a high school and we'd have to build a middle school. Right there, it would cost the town millions of dollars and put us in a very, very precarious situation financially. Our residents wouldn't be able to afford it. I wouldn't be able to afford it. So the benefits of having a regional school is just for that. Is your, first off, it's already established. It's already in place. It's already working. It's, you know, if there are issues that need to be addressed as far as how the funds get allocated or how the expenses get allocated, that's fine. We can discuss that. But to restructure the whole thing and create a whole new school system, I think is not the way to go. So I would, I would not be in favor of doing that. I think it would cost too much. But the school system is in nice, is very good shape. We already have funds and resources invested into them. And they've got a great placement where they're located, where they have expandability and they have land around it. And it's, and it seems to accommodate the communities that it assists. On the other side of that too is you have to consider how that's going to impact the other communities that are also benefiting from our contribution to that. How's that going to impact them? And that's our neighbors, you know? You don't, you don't, you don't treat neighbors like that, you know? So I would want to, you know, so that's why I would be against that if that was...
Okay. That came up.
If that came up, yeah, I don't think it...
Okay. I've only got two more. He's going. Okay. What is your opinion of a split tax rate? That is the different tax rates for residential versus business, and by business we mean industrial and or commercial properties.
My understanding of the split tax rate is usually commercial and business have a lower rate.
I'm sorry. Say that again.
My understanding of the split rate is that the business and commercial get a slower rate?
A higher rate.
Oh, it's a higher rate?
Higher rate than residential. So they pay more taxes.
But they take up less. No, okay. So they pay more taxes for property taxes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. What's our current rate?
$11.15, $11.15, which is, everybody pays across the board. Yeah. So the question was, it was a Facebook question. The question was, would you agree to have a split tax rate so that the businesses in the commercial properties are all paying more than a residential home?
Okay. We are primarily, primarily a residential community. What is our, what is our percentage of property that has commercial or business?
I think that what I've heard is it's in the, like 87% is residential. The rest is. So it's very little business.
It's very little business. And what does, what would the benefit be of doing that? How much, how much of an increase would it bring to the town that it would? Because now what you're talking about is, for example, any business, right? So that means...
Mom and pop shops.
Mom and pop shop, that they're struggling already with the cost of minimum wage going up and the cost of materials going up and product going up. And now they're trying to keep, utilities have gone through the roof for them. It's, you know, there's a lot. So it doesn't just impact the big box place, okay? So it impacts all the small, little shops. For the percentage of the town, I think it would be more impactful if we did a split tax. I think leaving it the way it is for right now would make more sense.
What would you do to attract, or what should the town do to attract more business into town to help us out?
To, well...
To come to town and want to do business here?
Well, to do business here and to come to town, you need to have those facilities. So where do you want business?
Well, we have a lot of empty buildings right now from businesses that were here, like on Route 18. There's some on Main Street that have vacated. So how would you fill those spots? Any suggestions?
I would try to, I would try to start focusing on entrepreneurials, small businesses that would come in. People, residents of town that want to open up their own, their own place. We've got, you know, we've got Between the Ro, I'm terrible with names, but Between the Roses, right?
Yes.
Right. You know, you've got the shops at Savas. You've got the antique shop at Savas. You've got, you know, you've got the water filtration. You've got the, there's a new brewery going at the bank. It's really a nice thing in town. There's not, we don't have a lot of gathering places, restaurants or types of things like that. And we have some locations that we could do that. Maybe, not sure. I mean, I think just with getting people in town interested in doing that type of thing, you know, and just getting the interest out there. We are very, being receptive to them, bringing them in, helping them out, tell them what they need to know. This is, we would really like you to come to town, you know, this is what we can do. You know, what can we do to help, you know? And I really think the town needs to help because my wife and I, we're just five years into owning a small business. And we walked in not knowing, what do we, how do you run a business? I don't know how to run a business. She was, she's great. She knows how to run the business. And she does a wonderful job. But if we had a little bit of help by town and other people, we got help. People were there to help us. But there was a lot of questions. So I can, I can understand how someone who wants to open up a small business might...
Think twice.
Might be, yeah, a little bit nervous and reluctant and maybe not feeling confident. And I think we, as a town, we could definitely help that.
Okay. All right. Your last question. You ready? When we called for questions, several residents asked about the Lakeville Hospital property, currently owned by Rhino Capital. Rhino Capital is appealing the, excuse me, the recent lawsuit while also submitting some preliminary plans to the Planning Board. What is your opinion regarding the Lakeville Hospital site? And then do you have any thoughts as to how the town can work with Rhino going forward?
Well, I don't have a whole lot of background on what's been going on with the Rhino other than the... than the, the, they're appealing the DOD, right?
Um, no, at the moment, the, some of the residents that got together, there was a court case and they won, so Rhino Capital is appealing that-
Oh, okay.
-so that they can build a warehouse. And so how do you feel about that? And they also submitted some preliminary plans to the Planning Board in case the, they don't win their appeal.
Okay.
So how do we work with Rhino Capital so something goes in there that works with, works for everybody?
Yeah, I know the Planning Board made some changes, and I think that was some of what was going on. I don't, I think Rhino's looking to try to get grandfathered in so that they can go by the old guidelines-
Yep.
...instead of the new guidelines. And if they do that, how will that impact those communities? And I think, you know, there's a, the old guidelines as for a 100-foot buffer, if they were to put a warehouse. Rhino owns the property.
Mm-hmm.
There is a lot of concerns I have regarding the current state of the property and what's in that land, and how that land, how that's going to be mitigated, how that's going to be addressed, and, and I, and how the, and how and if the EPA could get involved to set guidelines as to what they're required to do for the safety and the benefit of the residents of the town. I think it would be, it would be best benefit of the town and of the Select Board if they could get the legal department involved, get the legal aid involved to try to work with Rhino to come up with a solution. It's, it's a very, it's a very difficult situation, because I think we have, what, two options? We have a big warehouse that goes in and really, you know, impedes the, the people that live in that-
Well, you wouldn't really have a choice if they win their appeal. If they have, if they win the appeal, the warehouse goes in.
Oh, but I thought it was either a warehouse or a condensed housing.
It would be, that is prob, that is the preliminary plans that they sent to the Planning Board in case they do not win the appeal.
Okay.
But if they win the appeal-
They're going to put in a warehouse.
Correct, because they own, like you said, they own the property.
They own the property.
So it could go either way, it all depends on what, what happens with the appeal.
And, and that's one of the things that I was referring to as far as working for the benefit of the residents. If they put in, so really it's not up to the Select Board on what's, what's going to be going-
No, but it would be, but you'd want to work with them if they lose the appeal.
Exactly.
Because of what else they might put in there.
Exactly.
Right.
So either way, there should be a, a discussion with Rhino to have a relationship that is going both ways so that there is some discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said about when you have conflict, you need conflict resolution.
Right.
That means the person needs to be heard, and we have to also be able to speak and be heard as well. And the benefits of the town need to be heard by Rhino, and they need to respect those and do what they can and maintain a safe environment. One of the biggest concerns I have, regardless of what goes in the property, is how that land gets, that gets managed, gets developed, so that it doesn't cause or create a situation of health concerns for residents or of the water system. And that's a, that's really an important part of, of my concerns. Because that is, regardless of what goes in that land, is going to impact the residents of this town for decades to come, for generations to come.
Yeah, true.
You know? And from what I'm also understanding, there's also another development going in near that area that's being going, being brought to the town for, between CVS and the storage unit.
Oh.
That is-
I missed that one.
And that's for age-specific housing, I believe. And I would be, so, you know, how's that going to impact them as well? Because they're going to be living there when it's being developed, and that's a concern I have for those age-specific, you know, it's age-specific people, they've, you know-
Twenty seconds.
So that would be my concern as well, because other land in that area is being developed.
Right.
You know? And how is that going to impact our, our residents, you know? And, you know, the, the, what has, we don't know what's in the ground, we don't know what's over there. All we know is that when we start disturbing it, it's going to get into the groundwater.
All right. Okay, well, that wraps up our questions for the interview. So if you would like, you can take a brief two minutes for a closing statement to talk to our viewers about anything you want to say that you missed in the beginning and during the questions.
Well, there's a lot of, lot of topics that we covered. All I can really say is I'm, I put my name in for the position of Select Board because I'm interested in maintaining this town. That, I love Lakeville, I've been, I've been here since, for, for a long time. This town is a, is a really great town. I have family that live here, I have nephews and nieces, and, and, you know, this is, this is our home, and I don't want to see, I don't want to see the town be developed in a manner that's unthoughtful to the residents. I'm, I put my name in now because I, I've reached a point in my life where I can contribute to the town. I have time available, I have knowledge that I've acquired over the many years I've worked in management and in finance and, and working in what I do. I think I have contributing ability to help this town grow in the next, you know, few years while I'm here, and, and I hope to be able to be part of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So thank you, we really do appreciate you taking the time today to meet with us-
Absolutely, my pleasure.
...and present your views.
Thank you.
And for those of you watching at home, this is a friendly reminder to come out and vote, and that is on Monday, April 3rd, from 12 noon to 8:00 PM, and that's at the Loom Pond Lodge at Ted Williams Camp. Thank you.